Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the municipal boot camp training series. Session number four, planning board basics. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the basic rules of the planning board in the in community development. Along with myself, Sean Lowe, I'm a senior planner at MRB Group. I have Carl Schmidt with Hancock-Esterbrook.
Good evening, everybody.
So if you're a little housekeeping in regards to training requirements, the PDF of the broadcast will be made available and emailed out to everyone this coming Monday, along with your training certificates. So getting started. Our little disclaimer here. So again, I just kind of went over that, you know, this is for information purposes only and not intended for any legal advice. So tonight, we're going to be covering a lot of different items. We're going to be kind of scratching the surface of the items. We're going to be talking about triggers, what triggers a public hearing? When do I need site plan approval? And some of the nuts and bolts of the planning board roles and responsibilities. You know, the session is going to focus on, you know, the basics of the board's role in the development process. And as I go through this, I'm going to be kind of inserting some case studies, some examples that I feel as municipal board members and so forth, that you can relate to. So I hope that that is helpful. So, you know, starting off, you know, when we, when we look at zoning versus planning, they're kind of synonymous, but in actuality, they're, they're quite different if we really look at it with a fine tooth comb. You know, zoning refers to a very specific set of regulations governing various aspects of development. You know, we have the very specific codes such as design standards, your zoning code, and so forth. It differs from planning in that planning is a much broader and general in scope. Well, you know, zoning deals with more of the nuts and bolts, as I explained. You know, just some basics in regards to zoning is the code enforcement officer. They interpret zoning laws and enforces those laws while the planning boards implement those laws. So in some communities, as we're going to get into this, I'm going to cover some statutory requirements, but not in all cases do you have a planning board. In some municipalities, the ZBA will be the designated board to review site plans, subdivisions, and so forth. So we'll, we'll get into a little bit more of that as we go on. So planning board membership. So planning board membership is composed of, you know, the municipal board, seven-member board or a five-member board. There is no, you know, this is, this is up to the municipal board to determine. And it usually comes down to the size of municipalities, smaller municipalities may elect to have five, but sometimes it's, it's very difficult to get full membership of these boards. You know, members who stay on a board past their term of office are known as holdovers. They can continue serving until an appointing authority tells them more or less to leave or until someone has appointed in their place. So some general guides under the public officers law is pretty much anyone can be a member of a municipal board. He must have to be 18 years of age, a US citizen, and must be the resident of the community. One example, I just kind of, it gets a little confusing, but there, one example would be a resident of a village may serve on a village planning board or a planning board of the town, which the village lies because they are residents of both. However, a resident of a town outside of a village may serve on a town's planning board, but not on the village. So, and Carl, do you have anything you want to add to planning board membership before I go on to the next slide?
No, I mean, I think you covered most, most everything there. You know, sort of the, I guess, basic requirements for public officers in New York.
Sure, sure. So in regards to training requirements, we hear, we hear this a lot, that you need to maintain four hours per year. And, and honestly, this is something that really, really slips through their cracks. I've had board members tell me, well, I haven't received training in two, three, four years. Not going to name any names, but it happens. And, you know, technically, to be eligible for reappointment to the planning board, members must have completed the training required, you know, by their prior term. So thank you for joining in those credit hours. And, you know, the training should be tracked by the municipal clerk, the board secretary, or even the department head. However, however you can keep track of that, it would be beneficial. So a little bit more about planning board membership, alternative members. So we have a five-member board or we have a seven-member board. Okay, you know, alternate members, by state law allows the appointment of alternates to the planning board following the adoption of a local law ordinance. So this has to be in the books. It has to be approved by the municipal board. Their terms are usually established by local rather than state law. And the local governing board determines the office, again, whether that's the number of years. Again, removal from the board, you know, falls in if you're failing to attend meetings. I've seen where, you know, a planning board member hasn't been to four planning board members, and they're like, where's Joe? You know, so, you know, it's important to communicate, you know, with your chairman, your department head. So the, the other thing I do want to touch on is that removal from board, again, if, if there's a conflict of interest, you know, perhaps an applicant before the board is, is a relative of a member, or perhaps a member holds a substantial financial interest in the application, which is before, before the board, is probably in the best interest of that board member to recuse themselves. I've, I've, I've seen it in several occasions where an application will come before the planning board, and one of the planning board members has an interest in that application as he is the lesee of the land to the solar company. So there is a financial stake in there. However, this kind of went on, and that, that board member never recused himself, nor was any, no one really spoke up and said, hey, you know, by the way, Joe, maybe you should recuse yourself. And the board, the boards and the members of the board have that ability to, you know, speak up and let the other board members know that, you know, this might not be in the best interest of the board or the community. Carl, you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I, I agree with you. You know, it's, it's always the board members that call, I guess, whether to recuse, but there's, you know, certain criteria, especially if you have an individual community or interest in a particular application before you, where you're, you know, by state law, you're required to abstain, or sorry, to recuse yourself. So certainly something to be aware of. And generally, you know, I, I guess, just by, by, by the process of being a good board member, you, you may want to go beyond that. And even if there's sort of an appearance of impropriety, certainly consider whether you want to recuse. And I guess along those lines, I'll note it here, because I know we've looked into it before in state law, but the sort of the, the general use for alternate members, I think, is to fill in when there's a, a general absence for, you know, for other members on the board. And the, the general law, the general state level law doesn't really provide for that. Alter members are, are intended to fill in if there's a conflict of interest. And then it's up to the local municipality to sort of set its own local law that says alternate members can, can fill in if there's just a, a general absence. So something to be aware of.
Yeah. And just one other thing to note to that before we get to the next slide is that, you know, for example, if a community does not have alternates, you know, readily, readily available, and let's just say a planning board member has to recuse themselves, you may run into a problem in regards to having a majority vote. So not having an alternate to bring on to have a majority vote, that could, that could be a significant, not issue, but something that should be considered. So. So this is where we're going to spend quite a bit of our time, kind of in exponential way here. So the kind of the meat and potatoes of this presentation is the two types of powers, which are both critical in the development process in your community. One is the regulatory powers and the other is advisory powers, excuse me. So regulatory powers are state statutes that, you know, authorize communities to delegate a subdivision review. And local law may charge the board with review of architecture, signage, and other issues associated with the character of the community. And advisory powers are, are exactly what they sound like. They're, they're to provide guidance, to weigh in on items like comprehensive plans, land use regulations, and so forth. So planning boards are granted regulatory powers either by state statute, as I previously mentioned, or by a local governing board. The only regulatory power specifically delegated to a planning board by state statute is to review a subdivision plots. However, the power may not be exercised unless the local governing board formally adopts a resolution, local law. And that, that's, that's within your site plan review regulations. It clearly says that the planning board has the authority to review and approve. So that's just, you know, in addition to subdivision review, the review of site plans and special use permits are frequently assigned, you know, to planning boards. You know, as of the last 20 years or so, seven, a little over 70% of cities, towns, and villages in New York review subdivisions, while about that same percentage, 70%, review site plans. The, the other percentage are communities that may defer them to county, county boards and so forth, that don't have the capacity to, to review. So kind of what I have here is what we're going to be discussing, you know, we're going to discuss a subdivision review, site plans, and special use permits. In the, my following slides are going to be more specifically on the subdivision site plan and special use permit. But these regulatory powers afford the planning board to have additional review and ability to review signage. So for example, some municipalities choose to review sign plans administratively, which is fine. However, to somewhat expedite the process, when we have, when there is a site plan in front of a planning board, rather than having that application for a sign permit go to the board, you can do it all inclusively. You can have that sign plan be approved by the planning board. And a lot of municipalities elect to do that. A special use permit, those are uses, and I'm very keen on special use permit for those right uses. And we're going to get into a little bit more about that. But these should be closely looked at when updating regulations, because special use permits can be very useful in regards to board setting special requirements and conditions. And sometimes special use permits get a little confused with special exceptions and conditional uses, which are interchangeably used. And historical preservation, some planning boards do have the ability to review and work with the local preservation boards and so forth. And architectural review, planning boards may review the incorporation of design elements. For example, a lot of site plan review regulations and, you know, municipal codes, they'll have, under standards, they'll have specific architectural review standards. So those need to be take, taken in consideration when reviewing these site plans. Next slide. So subdivision, I want to spend a little bit of time on this because I want to kind of touch on some things that I feel that are, are happening a lot in communities, which are lot line adjustments, which I'll get to. So state law authorizes governing boards to grant power to review subdivision plots only to a planning board. So a ZBA is not permitted by state law to review subdivision plots. So subdivision is a, you know, is a division of a parcel of land into a number of lots, blocks, or sites, with or without streets for the purposes of sale, transfer, ownership for development. Subdivisions may be defined by local regulations as either major or minor, with minor subdivision processes having fewer requirements and less extensive criteria than major. A lot of municipalities, for example, will define a minor subdivision as three or five lots or less, and then they'll have a set of standards. As opposed to a major subdivision, which might trigger a realty subdivision, which is required to be reviewed and approved by the DOH. But major has more, more design standards, elements, development constraints, and so forth. So if you don't define your subdivisions that way, no big deal. It just provides a little bit more transparency, clarity when going through the subdivision review process. So the one thing I want to, and if you do have any specific questions, and I know there's a lot of planning board members out there, and I know I'm going really quick. If you have any specific questions to either site plan process, the subdivision, type them up, and I will post them along with the presentation. So along with subdivision, I want to talk a little bit about lot line adjustments. And you probably have seen these. And, you know, these are typically a function of a planning board under subdivision regulations. However, lot line adjustments can be conducted administratively, thus saving the applicant, you know, time, money, and so forth. The definition of subdivision may include a lot line adjustment. There is no express statutory requirement that defines a lot line adjustment as a subdivision. So a lot line adjustment or alteration where a boundary line is adjusted and not creating a new tax parcel is just basically moving the lot line, whether that is to make a non-conforming lot conforming, or to move that lot line so that the leash field or septic field is greater than 10 feet, meeting separation requirements. That's why a lot of people do lot line adjustments. And a lot of municipalities, if it's not defined in your code, you know, you might want to just update your definition. And that, again, that can be done administratively, or it can be done as part of the planning board review. Again, I've heard from a lot of municipalities, well, just moving a lot line, why do I have to pay this application fee? Why do I have to wait 30 days to go to the planning board? So doing it administratively is more kind of a business friendly way of doing things. And the last thing I really want to talk about that is pretty important in regards to processes is default approval. Now, you know, reaching a decision in a timely manner is especially critical when reviewing, you know, subdivision plans. I do want to point out that a lot of municipalities, I'm not sure if yours, but define, and they have a process. Sketch review, preliminary review, and final review. So sketch review is more or less coming into the planning board, not with a napkin drawing, but, you know, a sketch review and saying, you know, this, here are my thoughts, these are the quadrants, this is, does it meet the town's regulation, subdivision regulations? So that's sketch review. And then preliminary review gets you a little bit further. It gets you through some of those development constraints. It'll get you through maybe seeker. It'll kind of iron out some of those discrepancies, and then that gets you to final approval. Whether you do preliminary and final together, it all really, really depends on the project. And if, if your board does have preliminary and final review, there, there's no issues of approving a subdivision together, preliminary and final, if that makes sense. So. Moving along, site plan review. So while subdivision of land and installation improvements like sidewalks and roads, site plan is a little bit different. You know, there's a lot of Sorry, sorry. So a site plan is, you know, a drawing, and I kind of got ahead of myself. I apologize. So site plan is something that is delegated to the legislative board to empower the ZBA or the planning board. So the ZBA, if the municipality does not have a planning board, the municipal board may elect the ZBA to be empowered with the site plan review functions. The legislative board may retain site plan review authority for themselves. When designating some of the other administrative body to review site plans, the legislative board must clearly define the extent of the authority being given. So if the planning board is authorized to review site plans, they may delegate a review board that may be kind of an ad hoc board. And let's see here. Planning board should specify uses to be considered. So when going through the site plan review process, you have a checklist. And those checklists actually come in very, very handy. And there's, there's a lot of times when I will, you know, look at an application and the checklist will be all completed, but, you know, we have incomplete applications, we have incomplete seekers, when a full EAF is required, we're getting a short EAF. So as part of the site plan review process, it's very important to make sure applications are complete, so we don't delay the process. I recommend prior to applications being forwarded out to the planning boards, that the department heads that are responsible for accepting applications to do a completeness check. A completeness check will avoid any holdups. And, you know, there's too many, I've seen too many applications not being processed and then being told by the planning board that the application is incomplete. And that's, that's, that's embarrassing for the municipality. It's, it's, you know, it's embarrassing for the, the applicant. And not only that, it delays the process. So if, every community is different, but I strongly recommend prior to collecting planning board fees and engineering fees, if that's what you do, is conducting a completeness check. Another thing that might come in handy in regards to site plan review, specifically for larger projects, is what I like to call is planning and review committee meetings. Now, this is something that several communities have elected to do. It's basically taking all the applications that the department has received. You sit down typically with the planning board chairman, town attorney, the code enforcement officer, the fire marshal, or, and the superintendent. Basically, you get the applications at the table, and you, you look at them, and you discuss them. Are they complete? Do they meet other requirements? Do they meet the checklist? Are they signed? And then they forward those to the, the planning board. So two things to consider prior to site plan review is maybe doing a completeness check and maybe holding a PRC meeting or some kind of internal review meeting. Oof, let's see here. Special use permits, going on a special use permits. So a special use permit is a tool which adds flexibility to the zoning law. It is a way of allowing uses on some parcels, which may not be suitable everywhere, everywhere in a district, but it are, but is still considered desirable. The good thing about special use permits is that the approving board gets to not only approve it with conditions, but if they're not abiding by those conditions, the code enforcement officer may revoke that. So for example, short-term rental. You issue a short-term rental permit, they meet all the requirements in regards to bedrooms, you know, septic capacity, ingress, egress, and so forth. So with a special use permit, if they're not adhering to those conditions through the special use permit, the code enforcement officer can send a warning, send a citation, whatever they do, and they can revoke that. So it gives the board some power. So one thing that I've, I've seen, let's take some of those nuisance uses, let's call them, whether they're a gas station or a home occupation that has created some controversy in your community, and you're allowing them by, by right. Basically saying you're allowed to do them. However, when updating your zoning code and looking at some of those nuisance uses, what you can do is consider making those as special use permits. So those applications will come before the board, and the board can ask questions, and the board can set conditions and so forth. And the good thing is the special use permits run with the land. If someone comes in after the applicant leaves and changes things up, well, that's, that's not permitted. So with a special use permit, state law requires that, requires all public hearings occur for a special use permit to be approved, as well as a notice to adjacent municipalities and referral to the counties. So that, that is requirement. And again, and the other, the last thing I want to touch on, especially with print, sorry, is solar projects. With the latest craze of solar projects, a lot of solar regulations are outdated, and municipalities are rewriting their codes. And when rewriting these codes, I highly recommend that community solar projects, whether small or large scale, be considered under a special use permit. It gets, it gets the board to ask questions, set conditions, and so forth. It gives the board, the municipality, some leverage in that use. Advisory powers. So now that we've moved on from regulatory powers, we are going to move on So now that we've moved on from regulatory powers, we are gonna move on to advisory powers. And this is exactly what it sounds like. It's to provide guidance. And this comes out of state statute or a local governing board. So you know, the planning board may recommend regulations on subjects in which they have jurisdiction. Regulations must be adopted by the governing board through a local law or ordinance. Land use studies, maps and reports. The planning board has the authority to make investigations, maps, reports relating to planning and development of their municipality, such as a study of historical resources. So if, if there's an issue, you know, that the community is confronted with. I have a client that is, the planning board is currently working with the historical preservation because they want to designate a portion of the municipality to the federal register. So the planning board is using their advisory powers to provide the historical preservation committee, commission with their, some powers, some guidance. In capital budget, budgets, proposed actions by other boards and then area variance requests. So I know that this is not a function of the planning board. This is more, this is a function of the ZBA. But the, the ZBA may require a favorable recommendation or a written recommendation concerning a proposed variance because not all area variances or use variances require site plan approval. So that wouldn't even go to the planning board, might just go right to the ZBA. So that's where the ZBA will refer it out to the planning board for their expertise. So kind of jumping around as another advert, advert, advisory power, excuse me, the comprehensive plan. So the reason I bring this up is it because it relates to zoning in so many different ways. And what I want to talk about in regards to the comprehensive plan in relation to zoning is sequencing. And what I, what I mean by sequencing is that, and per state law is that, you know, zoning must follow in accordance with a comprehensive plan. So with that being said, if a municipality is looking to, you know, update a substantial amount of their zoning code and, but yet they're, you know, looking to update their comprehensive plan as well, you might want to start with a comprehensive plan, which provides a number of tools, insight and recommendation that can really, really, really help with updating the zoning code. I'm currently working with a couple of clients that had recently completed their comprehensive plans and now they're following suit with their zoning code update and it is working out quite nicely and it's providing a lot of guidance. So Carl, you have anything you want to add or are you good?
No, I mean, I guess from a legal perspective, I, I agree with you there. It's, it's helpful to, you know, if a municipality is looking at modifying its zoning code, it's helpful to go through a comprehensive plan review and revision, adoption beforehand because that, you know, as you suggest, town, well, all zoning law require that the zoning follow the comprehensive plan. And we, we've had cases where municipalities have been sued, you know, with the allegation being they haven't followed the comprehensive plan and, and, you know, taking those all the way up to, to for the department appeals and, you know, thankfully the, the, this particular municipality updated this comprehensive plan before, before, you know, relatively soon prior to implementing its new zoning and were able to reach back and, you know, pick elements out of that comprehensive plan that supported the municipality's zoning change. So, you know, it was, it was a win at, at the appellate division. So, so certainly from a legal perspective, it's, it's important to, to make sure, you know, to make sure that there is some comprehensive plan review and backing for, for those legislative changes. And also I guess, you know, from, from the perspective of a, of planning board, this, you know, I, I think almost always a comprehensive plan will go before the planning board for an advisory review. And that's really the chance for the planning board. You know, they don't have direct legislative powers in, in a municipality generally, but that's sort of their chance to really chime in and say, you know, this is how we see our community, you know, progressing. This is what we want to see, this is what we want to see our zoning, you know, our zoning, our zoning code or sort of our zone, or overarching zoning outlook to, to reflect.
Yeah. And to that point, you know, when, when, when zoning follows the comprehensive plan, it provides a defense mechanism against, you know, split zoning, spot zoning challenges and so forth. You know, I've come across a municipality that has a whole corridor that is the first couple hundred feet that is one zoning district and the, the backside is another district. How it got that way, I have no idea. However, you know, per the regulations, it said, well, you can't cross one district to do the use that's permitted in the back district. So this created, you know, a lot of confusion. So as part of addressing this, we, we updated, we knew the comprehensive plan was kind of down the horizon. So when we did the update to the comprehensive plan, that was one of the key objectives in correcting was the split zoning. You know, once that comprehensive plan was finalized and recorded, moved along with the zoning code update and, you know, it was to correct all those split zone parcels, it was more justifiable because it was outlined in the comprehensive plan, which was, you know, which is a community-based document, so. Meetings. So with meetings here, I have Hancock on this. Carl, you want to touch on this, please?
Yeah, sure. Happy to jump into this one. So, so I think almost any meeting, you know, involving the planning board is going to be an open meeting, certainly anything where there's a quorum and the, the planning board members are, are, you know, considering and a deliberating on an official action. So something, something to always be aware of, you know, even, and I, I think we chime on this in, in quite a few of these presentations, but you know, even if you're in, you know, out, out and about, I know a lot of members here are probably from smaller towns and may see, you know, may, may see people out at, you know, general functions. But if you're discussing a application before the board and there's a quorum, certainly be aware of the public, you know, public meetings law. So purpose of open meetings laws, I guess just what it says. The idea is that the public has the, the right to be able to see the deliberative process, see what their government's doing. So, so the, the intention is that, you know, the actions of the board, if the board is, you know, considering and deliberating, performing any, anything that's going to end up in an official action, that the public has the right to, to view that process. So a number of, I guess, steps you have to follow, public notices, and I think we've touched on, on these already, but more or less anything, anything a planning board's likely to do by way of approval, likely is going to have to go through a public notice process. So subdivision has to go through public notice, special use permit has to go through a public notice process. Site plan may or may not, depending on the local code. I think most codes require it, at least, you know, depending on, on the sort of the level, the, the size of the, the project, if there's going to be public interest. It's, I think always advisable, even if it is optional to, to provide sort of more. Sorry, I guess I'm, I, I'm going to the public hearings here, not precisely public notice, but, and I think we'll address this a little bit later, but, but yeah, the, the idea is to, to sort of get to, get, get the process out there and, and, you know, be available for, for the public to, to see what's going on. So I, I guess by way of public notices for open meeting, they have to be provided, it depends on, on when the, when the meetings are planned. If they're planned more than a week ahead, they have to be provided 72 hours beforehand. Generally, from what I see, you know, generally planning boards operate on sort of a regular rotation. So everybody knows, you know, if it's a 30-day cycle or, or twice a month, there's certainly plenty of time to get out public notices for meetings. It, it may come up if you have to hold a special meeting where, where you're up against a time limit. Or, you know, if you have to hold a special meeting with less than 72 hours of notice, then you don't, you don't necessarily have to, or sorry, with less than a week of, of notice that, that you're sending the special meeting, you don't have to have the 72 hours of public notice. You just have to provide as much notice as, as you can practically. For quorum requirements, so we're talking about planning board here. So it's either a five or seven member board, quorum requirements for, for any board. Sorry, any public board in New York is a majority of the fully constituted board. So it's, it'll be, you know, for a five-member board, it'd be three, for a seven-member board, it'd be four. And it doesn't matter who, you know, who shows up at that meeting, that, that requirement stands. It's always the, the majority of the fully constituted board. So, so you always have to meet that quorum requirement to, to perform any official action of the board. And then executive sessions, these are, are, are pretty, pretty limited, especially in the context of a planning board. So the, the public officers law sets forth a, a, a few limited criteria, a limited circumstances where the board could go into an executive session. Generally it's, you know, if, you know, for, for specific things, if you're, you know, in a collective bargaining agreement negotiation or discussing employment history of, of a person or corporation. So it's not something that would generally be applicable to planning boards. There is a provision to allow you go into executive session if, if there is pending or proposed litigation. So, you know, in, in the unlikely or unfortunate circumstance that, that a board is being sued or, or threatened to be sued, certainly you may go into executive session. Along those lines and it's sort of a separate, you know, a, a separate idea under the law. But if you, you know, if you have your attorney there, your board attorney there, certainly the board may meet with, with their attorney and that's subject to attorney-client privilege. It's a sort of separate thing than, than executive session per se, but it's another opportunity where the board can be outside of the context of.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Yeah, and the, the one last thing is that, you know, for some of these communities are, you know, spending, and I know everyone's been there, these very long board meetings where there are six, seven, eight applications. What I, what I have seen is some of these communities switching from meeting once a month to meeting twice a month, although it sounds like more work, get you out of there a little bit earlier to, you know, have dinners, see your kids and stuff. So switching to twice a month might be a consideration down the road. So running a successful meeting, every community is different, but this is just some of the, you know, some of the basics that should be there at the meeting, you know, just some general house rules, operating procedures. You know, if, if you have a seasoned chairperson, you know, all these things are going to be pretty much ironed out. But again, one, in order to have a successful meeting, you got to make sure that a lot of these things are in place. And the biggest thing is having a complete application, which we talked about. If you don't have a complete application, the board really can't, can't successfully act on that. Have a sign-in sheet, recognize a quorum and just some of the, the basics, call the meeting to order and, you know, covering the old, new and other businesses and closing out the meeting. Yeah, I've seen a lot of people where they forget to close out the meeting. So make sure you, you do that. So onto a complete application. I, I know that we, we talked about this quite a bit, but you know, completeness checks, as I call them, you know, these, you know, should be conducted when accepting, accepting planning board and fees and engineering fees. For example, if, if someone is coming into the building department with a site plan application and a package in his hands, I'm not saying, you know, the secretary or this code enforcement officer is to drop everything and make sure it's signed, make sure the seeker is there, make sure everything's there. We just don't have the time to do that. But at some point before it gets to the planning board, a thorough look should be completed to make sure that it doesn't get to the board and having an incomplete seeker or the wrong seeker, unsigned applications and so forth. So, you know, that's, that's some of my things in regards to running a successful me, meeting. And then like I said, if you have a, I don't really like competent, but if you have a seasoned chairperson, you should have a pretty smooth sailing meeting. So, you know, Carl did kind of touch on the public hearings here, you know, as he mentioned, they are required for subdivisions and notice. They're also required for specially, special use permits. Again, generally optional, but 90% of boards that hold a site plan application before the planning board will hold a public, will hold a public hearing for that. Because a public is a participant, they are affected potentially by the, the project. So it's, it's good to take in that public input. And again, as Carl briefed on this, it has to be published in a official newspaper. I know this day and age, we would like to be able just to post it on the municipal website or social media page. I don't believe legislation has moved to advance that. I could be, I could be wrong.
No, I think it still has to be in the, the official newspaper and the bulletin board if you have one. I suppose if you have a, a electronic bulletin board, you, it should be published on, on there as well. But, but yeah, you still have to use the official newspaper for a legal notice.
Yeah, in this day and age, I'm not sure how many people are picking up a newspaper, but usually they, 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 they usually know where to go. If they have some that stake or interest, they know, everyone really knows to go to the municipal website. So if they publish, if you publish it in the paper, then you did your due diligence. So just.
Yes. Well, plus, you know, a lot of statutes will have requirements that, that, you know, the, the surrounding neighbors are given public hearing notices as well. So, you know, you, usually there's, there's a pretty good, a pretty good setup, you know, in, in the local laws to, to be able to provide notice to people who, who may be interested
So this is now, you know, just, you know, so continuation of public hearing, you know, is, is important to have some rules and procedures, notifications, a clear and organized agenda. And what I mean by that is not, like, like we said, not everything needs to have a public hearing, but when your agenda states public hearings and they list all the, the applications, that's, that's, you're advertising that incorrectly. So you just want to make sure if there's a public hearing and how it's being advertised on the agenda, more importantly, on the public notice. And again, you know, these, these hearings are, are important for the board members to value, get valued input. And, you know, you know, if it's a, it's, if it's a decent crowd, I would set some parameters in that, you know, I would set a limit of three or five minutes, depending on the number of people that are present. You know, it's, it's no hard rule for this, but it's more at the discretion of the planning board chairperson. board chairperson, is setting that time limit. So I'll go through this really quick, we could spend hours on this, and luckily, our next session, session five, is the nuts and bolts of Seeker, which is scheduled for May 22nd, so I, if you would like to listen on that, we have a presenter that will be talking about that, so I will be skipping over this as we are kind of getting short on time, and we do have a few slides to go, and we'd like to answer a few more, a few questions. So this, this has drawn a lot of, not necessarily confusion, but when do I submit a county referral, which is more, you may hear it as GML 239M and N. So typically, counties differ from around the state, some counties have the referral forms readily available on their website, some counties don't even require a referral form, so it kind of leaves you guessing, well, what do I need to submit to get on a, the county referral? But anyways, here are the triggers, that if I have an application come in and it's 500 feet from a municipal boundary, or a state or county highway, or a stream, land on which a state or county building is located, or farm operations within a state agricultural district, those all need to require the GML 239 referral to the county. Now, sometimes, most, most of the cases is the town clerk or the planning board secretary that is referring this out to the county. Timing with these referrals are kind of important, okay? So when I get an application in to the building department and the planning board meeting is four weeks away, but yet the county planning board meeting is two weeks away, and you get, you have opportunity to meet that deadline, you should probably, if you, if you have, they deemed it as a complete application, it might be wise to submit it to the county. It doesn't necessarily have to go to the planning board first to get referred to the county. Now, I know some municipalities lately have required that, in order to refer to a county, they have to, they have to pass a resolution to refer to the county. Now, in my eyes, for some projects, maybe, but really, that really delays some of these minor projects, whether it's a lot line adjustment, or a minor subdivision or something, you could be delaying the applicant a couple months due to that. So just be mindful when doing county referrals and that it more or less kind of aligns with the ZBA meeting for variances in the planning board, so. Historical preservation, this will also be covered under our seeker next month, but quickly, seeker, under seeker, when we're reviewing the environmental assessment forms, and if it's done properly, the summary report in the back of the EAF, part ones you'll see, sorry, sorry, will generate a summary report, and it will trigger whether that property or subterranean properties in a archaeological sensitive area, if there's threatening endangered species. So typically, with an application, you'll get a letter from SHIPBO, and not everything requires a submission to the state historical preservation office, if it's adjacent to a historical registered building, or if it's in a historical district, then yes, the applicant is going to have to coordinate with SHIPBO to get what they call is a no effect finding letter. What that means is basically, they've reviewed it, they signed off, so when reviewing applications, even if it's a small application, it might be a good idea to ask the engineer or the applicant, "Have you coordinated with SHIPBO?" And for all those projects, and this is not very known, but if a project requires a stormwater pollution prevention plan, a SHIPBO effect finding letter is required to be part of that SWIP, which we'll get into a little bit more when we get into the seeker. Decisions. Carl, do you want to take this away in regards to?
Yeah, I'll jump on here, it looks like we're running a little bit low on time, so I'll probably try to roll through this fairly quickly. So decisions is sort of where, where the, I guess, where the rubber meets the road, and the board actually makes a determination. I think for the most part, I guess, every, every planning board decision, the, will be set up with, with sort of statutory period when, when the final decision has to be made, and generally, that's 62 days after the close of a public hearing, if a public hearing's held, that's the same for subdivision, site plan, and special use permit, if your planning board does a special use permit. And I think we touched on it previously, but for, for subdivision purposes, there's a deemed approval if, if that decision isn't made within the 62 days, so that's another thing to be aware of as a planning board. Otherwise, I guess it gets interesting, it depends on what your local law says for, for special use permits and site plans, whether there's a deemed approval, but certainly something to discuss with your, with your board attorney. Again, minutes, standard requirement for minutes of any, of any public meeting, the minutes have to contain the record of the vote on any determination, the minutes have to include the, the language of the motion and any conditions passed, so this is sort of where, you know, where either your attorney or your board secretary or the chairperson, you know, can help out and make sure that the motions are made, that they're, that they're clear, what it is the board's approving, that any conditions that are imposed are put forward on the record and made part of that, that resolution to, to pass a decision. And then, in the end, the copy of that decision is to have to go out to the applicant, the county has to get notice if it is a matter that's subject to 239 referral, and then that decision will be recorded with your local municipal court. Again, boards have to support their decision with findings, so, you know, it's just the nature of being in a, a administrative board, you have to have, you know, substantial basis for, for what it is that, that you're finding, for what it is that you're deciding, so. Again, this is a matter of sort of putting on the record what, what the basis of your decision is, what the factual circumstance are that lead, lead you to make that decision and support the board's decision, so those should be made part of the record for any, any, sorry, any, any approval, any denial, you know, any final decision.
Thank you. And do you want to?
Yeah, we can touch on these ones quick. So again, this is more of a procedural process, and I think we've touched on all these, you know, before the final decision can be made, the process has to go through the county referral process of 239M and, has to go to the county, wait the 30 days, and then, you know, address the referral package back from the county, if they have any comments. Any final decision has to go through the seeker process, again, if a public hearing's required, prior to their, to the board rendering a final determination, has to go through the public hearing process, and then you have to be aware of what your local law regulations are, because, you know, there's state rules, state law that, that sets up sort of the baseline default requirements for, for procedure, but very often, local municipalities have their own set of rules, own set of procedures, and, you know, own set of criteria, if, if you miss a procedural deadline, what happens, so. And then again, you know, resolutions should be as clear as possible, say the, state the conditions of approval, state what it is you're approving and the bases behind it.
Yeah, Carl, just really quickly, the one thing I wanted to add was, even though land use enabling statutes do not require the planning boards to make findings of fact, it's really important, maybe even in their resolutions, to provide the review of findings, ever if it's challenged or denied, so I just, that's, that's, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fair.
In Article 78 litigation.
Okay. This is probably mine, yes. Basically, Article 78 litigation, this is, I guess this is what happens if, if things go wrong, and this is where, when Sean says, you know, that your findings, your factual bases are not necessarily required to be laid out in a decision, if they're not, this is, this is where you will end up in, in a GM, so. Basically, the Article 78 litigation's a civil, civil litigation process, sort of a mini lawsuit, it doesn't follow necessarily the full civil process for an action, it's a special proceeding, but, but this is the process by which, you know, an applicant or a local resident who has an interest can bring an action against the board. The standard is arbitrary and egregious, so it's a deferential standard, the courts aren't going to substitute their judgment for the board, they're going to make sure that all the procedural processes were followed correctly, the court will make sure that there is a substantial basis for the board's decision. If those, you know, if those basic criteria are met, the court is more likely than not, and this is where the courts can find, to really not be able to overturn a board decision. If the court finds that, you know, those steps, procedural steps weren't followed, that there isn't a substantial basis in evidence for, for the board's decision, then the general remedy is that the, the court will send it back to the board for, for a second bite at the apple. Not to say that always happens, courts also have authority, you know, depending on the circumstance, to sort of direct the verdict and say, well, you know, the court's looked at this and we're granting an approval, very rarely does that happen, so more often than not, it's, it's a matter of the court sending the matter back to the board and say, hey, you didn't do this right, you have to do it again.
Okay, thank you, Carl. And that, and that brings us to a conclusion of the presentation, so if you do have any questions, I do see that there is a, several questions that were posted, I will answer those and send my responses back along with the posting on this Monday, and you shall all receive your certificate as well. Also, our next training, it will be held May 22nd, and that's going to be an entailed look at the nuts and bolts of Seeker. So thank you for all for joining, and I appreciate your time and dedication to the communities, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Carl, is that off?
I think so.
I stopped sharing.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Sorry, I get a little nervous in these presentations.
Oh, so do I.
I, I, hopefully they got some value out of this.
I think so. It seemed like it.
I mean, you know, looking at, you know, I don't think anyone's on, right? Yeah, no, we're, I'm in session, so. Anyways, yeah, you know, looking at, you know, I could talk for days on the comprehensive plan, but, you know, it's, this is like, like, like you said, I, this is where I like being in the group, being, having an audience, it's just a little bit more intimate and, you know, staring into it.
Exactly, yeah.
It's just, for me, it's kind of hard to articulate something that I'm trying to talk about.
Yes, yeah, I agree with you, and then you don't, yeah, you just kind of don't have any feedback to, you know.
So.
Be able to go off on something interesting, or ask someone, throw a question out there that's, you know, that's really pertinent, and then you can sort of have a real, a real conversation. I agree with you, it's a, it's a weird format, I think, the webinars.
Well, it still says 62 people on, but, all right, well, are you good?
Yeah, I think I'm all set, hey, I appreciate it, that was.
No, thank you very much for sitting in, and you got any other ones that you're doing with MRB?
I don't, not that I'm aware of, yeah, I don't know if they're all set for the year, but.
Until they volunteer, all right?
Exactly, until they volunteer for it, but I know Wendy's back for the next one, so she'll be on for Seeker, which is perfect.
Wendy with Seeker is very good.
Yes, yes.
All right, Carl, well, I appreciate your time, have a good evening, and.
Yeah, thanks, Sean.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, take care.
Okay, yeah, bye.